Well, I got seven o'clock. Should we start with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll do a roll call of the commission members, please.
Sure, Fudge. Fudge. Agustinelli.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
Robertson.
Here.
Eul.
Here.
Racine.
Here.
Andy Good.
Here. All right, and with that, we are to public comment on the agenda, and I see we have a good deal of public here with us today. So, would anyone who would like to make any public comments, please feel free to step up to the podium and do so. I will provide a little bit of extra detail tonight. We have no public hearings on our agenda.
We have one.
Oh, we do?
Resoning.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Thank you, Steve. We have one public hearing regarding the Scusell property. It is a rezone. That is on the agenda. You can certainly comment now or choose to comment during the public comment hearing associated with that particular project. If there's anything else on the agenda, I would encourage you to make your public comment now if you'd like to say something about that agenda item, or there is another opportunity after we complete new business for you to make public comment again. So, two opportunities for public comment, only one opportunity to comment specific to a particular project. So, if anyone would like to step to the podium and make a comment, please feel free to do so.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Strand, 1756 Woodward Avenue. And I, you let me know if it's not appropriate, but I'd like to talk to about High Tops. Okay. Living on Woodward, I am very concerned about a nightclub, concert venue, and bar going into Cherryland. I just think it's going to have negative impacts on the neighborhood as far as traffic, which is already a cut through now, and I just can't imagine what it's going to be like at 2:00 in the morning when people are leaving, the noise from people leaving, the noise of people coming with car doors slamming, the alcohol involved in it as well. I just feel like it's not appropriate for Cherryland. I don't know why they switched from Grand Traverse Mall. It's not in a neighborhood. We are a neighborhood, and I don't think this project will enhance the neighborhood, even with extra soundproofing, parking in the front. There's still, you know, a door in the back, and I just feel like it's not going to be conducive to the quality and peace of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Hayden Northrup, 889 Meadow Drive. This is the second time High Tops, I believe, has come before the Planning Commission. So, you'll have to forgive me if this is something that's already been gone over. Have we perhaps talked with Traverse City or any of the neighborhoods near some of the bars like Traverse City Whiskey Company, Right Brain, and Sail Inn? I think that questioning those communities or talking with maybe some of the Traverse City government organizations could help us know what to expect from something like High Tops.
Thank you. Anyone else with any public comment at this time?
I'm Megan Blonschine, and I'm 2696 Leewood Drive. Also about High Tops, I can understand the concern. I can completely understand that. But we also, Phil's been a good friend for a long time and nothing but that, and he's reached out with legitimate also. He understands the concerns with the noise. And he's went above and beyond, one. And two, we actually went as far as talking to some people who have homes the same distance as the woman who stood and spoke to the bars downtown, where there's also live music, and she said that it hasn't disrupted anything, and it's still a very distraught or sought-after area. People are still wanting to move there. People still desire to be there. The sound hasn't affected anything. I don't understand how bringing such a positive thing to Garfield Township in a world that we live in that's nothing but evolving could be anything but positive. And it's going to bring value up, it's going to bring people, it's... He, Phil has went as far as even saying, "If I had to put in a stoplight, I would do that." You couldn't have somebody more willing to be safe and prepared, like it's... He's at an age he could retire. He's doing it literally to like, for a positive, not a negative. And anything that anyone had concerned, he'd be willing to talk to you and give you a direct explanation. I think that in itself is huge. He cares. He cares what everybody thinks. He... You know, I don't, I don't really, I understand people's concerns. I come from a pretty cut family. I'll just call it what it is. My grandma would be the same person standing up saying she wouldn't want that in her neighborhood, whereas the other side of my family would be like, "I want that. We're in a growing, bring all that you can. Let's do it." And at least you have someone where if you have those questions, he's willing to explain to you, and he's went above and beyond for safety and to try to make everybody happy, and it worked for everyone. It's, you know, there's, I, it's just that. And the sound, we understand, that's a huge concern, especially with people who've lived there forever, but it is something that's going to be equipment that no place even up here has because it's a different whole setup. The venue, you will not be able to hear anything. There's a dog park right next door that he knows he cannot disrupt. The back door is going to be locked at the same time as the dog park. He is not trying to bring any kind of havoc to that area. That's all.
Thank you. I appreciate the commission's time to look into this. I have sent my remarks to Steve. Chris, I'm sorry, your name and address. Oh, Chris Remy. Sorry. I'm new. 1705 Woodward. We spoke before when High Tops brought this proposal before, and I think we've gone over the noise disruption, neighborhood character, and traffic and congestion problems, which I still think are a major concern. I appreciate the developers moving the entrance to the front side of the mall, but the couple of things I don't think we addressed last time when we looked at this was, one of my biggest concerns is this over-concentration of liquor license in this one area. This would put three liquor licenses in this property, and if the High Tops had three different venues, there's basically six different venues serving alcohol at Cherryland Mall now. And I don't really understand and don't think that's within the neighborhood character of what we have. I understand when you live downtown, you're by more entertainment areas, you know, you're kind of used to that kind of thing. But this neighborhood that surrounds Cherryland Mall is a lot of retirees, a lot of low income, and as one of our neighbors expressed at the last meeting, there's also goodwill there. So, we also have a lot of people who are recovering alcoholics, recovering drug addicts, also living close by. And I just, it doesn't feel right to put this kind of thing by there. And personally, I, the project scope and transparency of it, it feels like, while this might be a downsized version of what was offered before, to me, it kind of looks like it's been kind of chopped up into individual things, and they're still asking for the same amount of space. So, it's kind of a Trojan horse to bring the same-sized venue into a property that I just don't feel like it has the capacity to hold. We've looked at what the parking capacity is around the area. We've seen rallies and political rallies held at Cherryland Mall where we were overwhelmed by how many cars were parked on our streets, and I just don't, as someone who is about 160 feet from that door, I just don't feel like it's a good fit for our neighborhood. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else like to make public comment? All right, well, thank you. We will move on to our next item of business, review and approval of the agenda and any statements of conflict of interest.
I move we approve the agenda as printed. Support.
Motion by Racine, support by, I'm sorry, was that Joe or Pat who supported? Pat. Motion by Racine, support by Klein. All those, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same? Motion passes. Let's move on now to the review of the April 23rd, 2025 minutes.
Make a motion to support the minutes.
Support. Motion by Robertson, support by Fudge. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same? Motion passes. What do we have in the way of, I know we have some correspondence in front of us.
All the correspondence on the desk that we received just in the last day or two. An item from Jessica Van Housen Stroud relating to the High Tops, which is item 7A. A couple items of written public comment on the High Tops, also for item 7A. And a letter from the Watershed Center speaking on the Lake Point Village PUD amendment, which is item 7B.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to reports. Anything from the Township Board? Molly?
Short meeting last night, so nothing to report.
Okay, anything from any Planning Commissioners, zoning board of appeals?
I had no meeting.
Let's see, Parks and Commission, we met, we had a special meeting this month, the beginning of the month. Yep. And we discussed the progress of the plans related to the new trail that is being developed in the Commons. And then we also talked about our planning for the capital improvements program that will be incorporated into the township's upcoming budget this year. Joint Planning Commission?
We haven't had any meetings since my last report.
Okay. Steve, what do you have to say on behalf of the staff?
All right, a couple things. Our staff report's in writing. You already know your agenda items. There's a handful of administrative amendments we've been working through and a couple more that have come in since print of that report. We just keep working through them one at a time. We attended a workshop myself, and the zoning administrator, Mike Green, went to a workshop of the Regional Land Conservancy with planning and zoning staff from throughout the county. They shared some of their information and data on how they go about identifying priority conservation projects and some of the methods they use for that, some larger pieces they actually acquire, some they work with conservation easements, like one of our agenda items tonight. Looking at the map that they had, most of the larger pieces were in further out. The Land Conservancy has a service area of about five counties, so a lot of those were outside of the core area, including Garfield. But especially like where there's heavy wetlands or areas around like the river or lake, a lot of which are already in parkland to begin with, seem to be the highest priorities that were in Garfield. And they have helped the township in the past. They've been a partner on things. So, if there's ever an opportunity in the future, they are certainly a resource that can be tapped, so. And then we briefly touched on this at the Parks meeting, but it was that day that the new township website went live. So, I don't know if anybody has been to the township website lately, in that last week, but we recently updated it. Even if you go to the old URL, that redirects you to, the new URL is garfieldmi.gov, which is a lot easier to say, especially over the phone, instead of garfield-twp.com. So, we appreciate that, and just it's supposed to be more mobile-friendly, kind of an update to a website to kind of bring it into modern standards. So, we were excited for this, and we can keep adding things and tweaking, putting resources up there. So, we were excited to get this up and running.
Great.
I had very minimal involvement, so thank you to all the other staff who had more extensive involvement in that.
I thank you too. I will extend that same thank you because I've been pretty impressed by the little bit of time that I've spent on the website.
Yep.
Well, shall we move on to unfinished business? We have first on our unfinished business agenda, item PD 2025-38, Scusell Property, A agricultural rezoning, public hearing.
All right. So, this property is on Hammond Road. I can navigate on the map here. Proposal to rezon, and actually, the application was confirmed at the last meeting to include two pieces of the property, which is this one, parcel 0502401920 and 0502402000. These are both currently under conditional zoning agreements. There's some history that kind of dates back to previous arrangement of these parcels. The larger one is conditionally zoned, is A agricultural. The smaller, conditional CG. The larger one has a conservation easement on it, and the owners are looking to basically combine these parcels and extend that conservation easement onto this property. Mostly, the staff report has a lot of the same information as the introduction, mostly commenting the, now that it includes two parcels, to identify them throughout the report as such. Includes some of the background on some of these conservation easements that exist. There are also a couple of easements owned and maintained by the County Road Commission related to sort of mitigating wetlands from the construction of Hammond Road. So, those are owned and conveyed to the County Road Commission. And then just some preliminary comments on the criteria for rezoning, which are 1 through 8 from Section 421E, and would form the basis of any findings if we move on to findings. But otherwise, there's a public hearing, so we'll hear what we have to say, and then following discussion, the motion, if commissioners so choose, would be to direct us to write findings of fact.
Okay. Well, with that, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to comment on the Scusell Property agricultural rezoning, please step up to the podium and make your comment. All right, and seeing no one rush to the podium, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and move on to our deliberations. Anyone have any thoughts or comments? Molly?
Well, it's a down zoning, so I'm happy with that, and going from a commercial to an ag. And I think it'd be, it's wetland in there, and the owners would like to have that, so I'm all for it.
I know in discussions when we were doing the master plan update in the last couple of years, there was a lot of discussion about not having Hammond turned into another South Airport and limiting the amount of commercial, especially in an area around here where there's a lot of wetlands. And yes, the future land use map does show ag on there.
Any other, John?
I concur totally, and I think as of the last time we talked, subject to hearing from the public, we were all, I think, thinking this made a lot of sense. So, I'm not hearing anybody suggesting to the contrary. So, I'll be willing to make the motion that we direct staff to draft findings of fact for review at our June 11th meeting for application Z 2024-01, submitted by Chris and Anita Scusell to rezon the parcels, the two parcels that are listed in the report of 2025-38.
Second.
All right, we have motion by Racine, support by Eul. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same? Motion passes. Well, with that, we will move on to our next item of business, and here I've done it again. There it is. I start moving my paper around, and I, the agenda disappears on me. Item B, PD 2025-39, Gothier multi-family development special use permit, finding of fact review.
All right. The Gothier site, this is on a corner of US 31 and McCray Hill Road, essentially across from Hartman Road. This property is proposed for a total of 149 dwelling units for a multi-family development. The site is over 18 acres, although there are wetlands and creeks on the site. The buildable area approached about six or so acres, if I recall correctly. We had the public hearing last month, and staff director, or commissioners directed us to prepare findings of fact, which being on page four of the report. I have been prepared. There's a couple items that I think staff wanted to just comment on. Most things were compatible from our perspective. A couple of things we wanted to note, though, were that the, still waiting on the verification of the wetland delineation. And I believe we discussed this with commissioners, but it seemed like one possible way to deal with that was we will still need the wetland delineation to be verified by Eagle, by the state. We suggested if commissioners are in favor of approval, that could be potentially handled as a condition of approval to deal with that before any land use permits are issued, and if there are any alterations to that delineation that would change the site layout at all, to actually bring it back. And then the other item was the shared use pathway requirement, which, as we've seen in this and other applications, and we see administratively when we're reviewing site plans, comes up all the time as a requirement. In certain instances, this has, this requirement has been kind of delayed or deferred. In this case, staff is considering until a design can be configured that will work with the adjacent properties, including the, any alternate routes, given the extensive amount of wetlands and creeks and not just on this site, but on some of the neighboring sites. So, if that can be determined and maybe done jointly with development on other sites. There's one we're reviewing administratively right now where the requirement on the neighboring site was deferred, and then now that this one is, they can sort of both do it together. And it seemed to make more sense to deal with kind of some shared physical challenges with the environment and made some sense to coordinate that, so. We just wanted to bring that to attention as well. But otherwise, the findings, draft findings of fact are available, and our applicant is there as well.
I just wanted, excuse me, Bob Brashave with Gosling Zuback. I just wanted to give you an update regarding the Eagle verification. Keto Geikis from the, the, from Eagle, he was on site last Wednesday with our staff, and they walked the site. He confirmed the boundaries, and we're just waiting for his report now.
Okay.
I think he typically does a lot of fieldwork and then goes back and does a lot of reports, so.
Fair.
As soon as we have that, we'll forward it to you.
And now that it's spring, he's probably just done all his fieldwork, so, yeah.
So, so we don't, it's been verified, and we just, we won't have any changes regarding that.
All right. Thank you for the update. Any thoughts from any commissioners?
Looks good to me.
So, I'll make the motion that the findings of fact for application SUP 2025-01 has presented in Planning Department report 2025-39, and being made a part of this motion be adopted.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Agustinelli, support by Robertson. Is there any further discussion? I will, I do have some further discussion. I do have one. Molly jumped in with a motion before I could ask, which is okay. So, I just wanted to understand with regard, Steve, to the construction of the shared youth pathway along US 31. I understand that it's deferred, and I, it seems to me that it's deferred with good reason. But what is the structure of going to the developer when the conditions come together for that construction to be implemented? And where will, you know, what's the timeframe and where would funding come from?
That's a good question, and they could put a timeframe on it. If, I know we've done that for other developments in the past as well. I think it's, it's sort of an alert that that requirement is still in place. So, it, while it's deferred, if we want to put a timeframe on it, that it's more just an alert that the requirement is still there, even if it's, the details of it are not here right now. Would commissioners be interested in putting a timeframe? I think in others, we've done something like up to three years or...
What would be the condition, what would need to change? Because I mean, my understanding of the site, for them to put a pathway in, would it not be mostly boardwalk through the wetlands?
Correct, yeah. To cross a wetland, you'd have to do that, or you'd have to find somewhere where there isn't. And I think given that there's creeks on either side of the developed area, they would run into that either way.
So, then my concern becomes how, how are we able to, and I'm just concerned about the structure of that and uncertain about whether, under what conditions, we would obligate a developer or it would eventually be a homeowner's, no, these are apartments, aren't they?
These are apartments, correct, yes.
So, there would be an owner we could impose this upon at some point in the future?
In theory, yes.
And it's not an imposition so much as a condition that is not enforceable until a later date?
Correct.
Okay. Whatever, Molly?
Are you suggesting that it's a requirement of this project that they accommodate for that wooden walkway structure prior or someplace in our...
I'm not sure, because I'm not certain that it's necessary, that it's feasible for us to require them to build that level of infrastructure.
Well, that's...
Is where I'm kind of at, and if we're not going to require them to build that level of infrastructure today, I, I just see us, and I'm trying to think of a situation, but 10 years from now, we're like, oh, let's make them do that now. And everybody's, you know, it's, even though it's in here, it's forgotten, and I see, I see your expression, and I'm agreeing.
You don't go back. I mean, I don't think you can go back.
So, the context is, it looks at both the master plan and the ordinance. The master plan has the non-motorized plan, which shows the shared use pathway along 31, which shows sort of the vision of, we would like this connected to the general non-motorized network around the township to continue that connectivity, and presumably even with the physical challenges of constructing it. Connecting this development to a non-motorized network that people can get around town would be an amenity, would be advantageous. And it is in the zoning ordinance in Article 5, I think, Section 522, that talks about if there's something that is listed in the non-motorized plan in your construction, I think it's a value of just about $20,000 or above, in which case a new development easily goes over that threshold, and most renovations as well. When we've looked at this requirement on administrative reviews, it falls under the developer to put that in if it's not already in place. So, it's sort of a, it was part of the completeness of looking at all of the standards of the ordinance, and this is one of them. That could be accomplished in different ways. That could be accomplished in different ways. Uh, it could be in the right-of-way along 31 if there was a, uh, like a separated barrier from the road and right next to the road. It could be done further in the site and done through a easement on private property. There have been some that have been done that way throughout the township. Um.
So it strikes me, it would be feasible to obligate them in these conditions to provide an easement at some future date, but if we're not requiring them to build this path now or, let me just say anytime in the next five years, I, I suspect that that starts to become out of the reasonable, or, or is, or am I wrong? Is there another situation where there's been a latent path or, um, obligation in the, in, in approval and we've actually enforced that?
Um, cause I see what you're saying, like you don't want it to last so far into the future that it gets forgotten.
Or, or, or when we remember it, it strikes, this is unreasonable to impose a cost on a development that's been there for 10 years.
Right. I mean, well, there's also situations like, for example, the Kensington Park that came up here, uh, that was one where when they proposed an amendment, we looked back and there was still a requirement and they did put it in.
For something they had not built that they were supposed to have in, in accordance with.
Which I think.
Relative to the review.
When there was new owners, that was, had to be alerted to that. And there was, uh, some lively discussion about that. So, yeah. So this is sort of to at least get it in place to, uh, at least alert ahead of time that, that would be coming and that, um, I guess to avoid that situation again. So, um.
I think it's reasonable we put some timeframe on that thing so it doesn't get out there forever. I don't care if it's two or four years, but we need some kind of, some kind of control. Otherwise it'll be 10 years before.
That we would obligate him to build it within five years or that?
It's gotta be built within some time, not just whenever.
See the developers stepped up if you wanted to comment?
Yeah. Um, so I, uh, totally understand the.
Your name and address?
Oh, sorry. Um, Will Bartlett, 6352 Mission Point in Traverse City. Um, totally understand the point of, um, the non-motorized plan. Um, I just think, um, I ask that this not be something that we have to build within a predetermined time, um, because I have no idea what you would do. The, the physical challenges of this property, um, I think the logical place is I'm thinking about it to put a path is along 31, but you're bumping up against wetlands. Yeah. The, the access into the site, which is existing there now is, is going over wetlands. And then if you said three years from now, you have to build something, we'd be building through wetlands and elevated pathway to nowhere. And so I just, I ask that you please not do that. I'll accommodate, you know, if, if it takes an easement or something along those lines, you know, we had had some discussions with, um, the planning commission and Stephen John and, um, and Jennifer about an easement for, uh, pressure, pressure reducing valve on the site. And we were, you know, we want to be totally accommodating to that. Um, so we want to be totally accommodating, but I just want to make sure that we keep the realities of the site in mind.
Molly?
So before you sit down, uh, would you be, if the board thinks that this is something that we need to pursue, would you be willing to create a 10-foot easement along that wetland that's on your property so that that can happen in the future?
Give the township a 10-foot easement?
Well, I, I don't know how you would do it, but.
I think the difficulty right now is where exactly would that go?
Right.
I think the, yeah, some amount of, uh, language that might determine, like at some point in the future, that needs to be determined where it is.
My experience has been, and Bob, you might've stepped up to agree, I don't know, but, uh, I'll say my experience has been that if I have an easement and a later design suggests that it's the wrong easement, if I have an easement, it makes it a possible to revise the easement. Or if, if I have late, it's one thing to have a commitment to provide an easement in here, but if I have an easement, I can always come back and say, well, the trail should be 10 feet over here. Let's revise the easement and it's makes a lot more sense to do so.
So you're, you're thinking that you want to have it as a condition?
Let's, yeah, the condition is to just provide an easement for a future trail.
Okay.
So, Bob, did you have a comment?
No, I guess Will was just looking at me like.
I'm not the civil engineer, so.
Where are they going?
But I, I think, you know, it, it like to, um, go with what Will was saying. I think the, the reality of the site is that, you know, it's topographically challenged. Um, and it's, you know, if there's a, a future development, you know, that joins neighbor, you know, on one of the properties that is bordered our, border, bordering Will's property, I think it's, you know, it's fair to say that we would collaborate and come up with, uh, you know, something that could materialize in the future. I think, you know, the wording here says deferred until a design can be configured that works with adjacent properties or alternative routes. And I guess, I mean, I would just say we recognize that and, you know, if, if something materializes in the future, we'll collaborate and work on a solution.
Did you have some language you typed out, Steve?
Um, I didn't type anything new, but I prepared it in a word. So if we want to start tweaking it, we can amend it on the word.
Are, are you thinking, Chris, that maybe for condition number two, started off with, um, the applicant shall dedicate a easement for a shared use pathway, um, the construction of which is required but shall be deferred, blah, blah, blah. I, I kind of get where the argument's coming from about the timeline. I don't see how we could impose a timeline, uh, on the one hand, because who knows when or if something's going to happen next door. The flip side though, as Bob points out, it may get lost for 20 years, but if we still say something in here that makes it clear it is required, then even if it's 10 or 20 years later and we stumble across it like we did at Kensington.
And if there's an easement.
It's gotta be done.
There's an easement provided, then it makes it clear too. I, I like, yeah, why don't, uh, Steve, if you want to maybe.
Restate that.
John's language?
Probably can't do it the same way twice.
That's all right.
But the beginning of two.
Yeah.
Okay. The applicant shall dedicate an easement.
For construction of a.
Shared use pathway along US 31, um, which comma, while required, comma, shall be deferred, et cetera. All that other language you got in there?
I do think, John, that we're, we need to keep it in there as it's required and it's deferred, because then it's a slippery slope for everybody to come in and say, well, you let them off the hook. So we're letting you off the hook with this language today, but sometime in the future, that requirement could come into play. And that's just the, I guess, it's a condition.
Mm-hmm.
That, that what you're going, John?
Precise. I wish we could be more precise or specific, but I don't see how we can.
Yeah.
We don't know the size. We don't know the time.
It would be most likely, it would be a 10-foot pathway, just shared use pathway on our non-motorized plan.
But if you look at that site.
Right. Yeah.
I don't know how you're gonna.
Exactly. So there might need to be some modifications based on site conditions. Um, and it might depend on where it goes. If there's room in the right-of-way, if there's not, that might depend on, that might affect the design of it.
Fundamentally, what's recorded at this time, we'll have an easement dedicated for a future pathway.
Mm-hmm.
And there'll be an obligation that carries forward.
Yeah.
Or whenever there's an opportunity to do so. So, okay, I'm satisfied.
And when are we going to get the easement?
We're going to get the easement net today. Just, it, staff's.
But you were saying with, if you get an easement now, you can modify it into the future.
Staff's gonna agree on an easement as, and that's going to be a condition to provide for the, for the provision of an easement. And that's going to be a condition that'll work out.
Yeah. How that has been done on some of these other sites. So if applicant is interested, we have templates on how that has looked. So.
All right. So would, would the, uh, maker of the motion and the support, uh, agree to?
We have two motions here. So we're, we need to vote on the first one first.
Right, right. But we also need to amend, the motion needs to take into account the amendment. So.
That'd be a second motion.
That's in the second.
First motion is just to approve the findings of fact.
Findings of fact.
Thank you. Thank you. I did jump ahead. Thank you. Okay. All right. Well, now that we're done with discussion about the second motion, we can, uh, make our vote on the first motion. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same? All right, the first motion passes. Uh, we have a second motion.
Then I'll make the second motion, that application SUP 2025-01 submitted by Gosling Zuback Engineering Services, Inc., for a special use permit for a 149-unit multifamily dwelling development at parcel 0502105400 be approved, subject to the following conditions, one through seven, with modifications to number two.
Support.
All right, we have motion by Agostinelli, support by Robertson. It was Klein, it was Klein, sorry. Uh, any further discussion?
Did you get the modifications?
Uh, yeah, two reads, uh, based on, uh, what we discussed, uh, condition number two reads as the applicant shall dedicate an easement for construction of the shared use pathway along US 31, which while required, shall be deferred until a design can be configured that works with adjacent properties, including considering any alternate routes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Any opposed? Same? The motion passes. All right. Well, thanks everyone for indulging my concern.
All right. Uh, we'll follow up with the applicant as well for, uh, the report and decision order. Um, we'll be in touch. So, yep.
All right.
Hold on a second, let me save this document as the motion.
All set, Steve?
Yes.
All right. With that, we'll move on to new business, starting with item A, PD 2025-40, High Tups Cherry Land Center, CP Plan Shopping Center, Site Plan Review. And we have the applicant here as well.
Philip Beeler, 7525 Cedar Run Road. Um, though I try, I don't think I'm going to make everybody happy. I was just trying to meet some of the concerns. I don't know if I'm supposed to recap the whole project or.
Uh, I can give an overview to start.
Steve will start us off with an overview and then we'll, we'll take some comments from you.
Well, originally I was going to go to Sears. Um, then there was concerns with that, with the parking, uh, and the sound. Um, so I tried to do a venue, basically an entertainment venue, uh, facility. Has a bar, sports bar, restaurant in it, uh, lounge with a fireplace and, uh, a venue nightclub. I know the occupancy's a high. I maxed it out just in case for future stuff. Doesn't mean it's always going to be, you know, that many people there all the time. It's probably actually going to be pretty rare, but as far as the concerns, I designed this going to Yonkers because they have a front door entrance for the parking to be in the front. Um, I designed this place for the business to lean more towards the front of the building and for the sound. And, um, I even added some doors in the plan, um, that the Cherry Land had put a corridor in for, to keep sound and people to go through that. Um, I feel the insulation's enough for the sound. My bars are 25 feet apart and they can't interfere with each other. So I have to have enough insulation for sound to keep it that far to where it shouldn't go outside. Um, another was the parking in the back. Um, I suggested a lockout after a certain time to where the doors lock. You can go out for exit, but you can't come back in. I, I know I said 12. Um, it really doesn't matter if it was at seven or nine o'clock when the dog park closes. There's nothing that benefits me in the back parking lot. Parking for employees is basically all it's for. I don't need any parking in the back at all. So, I mean, if there was concerns to address, I know the hours were, um, 10 to 2, which was basically standard hours for a sports bar. And I just ballooned it over the whole project because, um, that venue is not going to be, it's probably only going to be open half the time. There's not so much you can do in a venue. So, um, other than that, I don't know what other concerns that, um, well, I know there's concerns, but that I could do as far as previous concerns were in the beginning.
Chris, I had a question for you.
Go ahead, Molly.
Um, so I'm happy you moved the entrance to the front. I, I think that was going to help a lot. In the drawing that we have here, it shows, uh, in the blue line, are you, explain to me, I mean, it's outside the building, so.
Blue line, I don't even know.
See that, what, what is all of that?
So, which page of the review report?
On page two, that, yeah.
Let's go back up to there. Okay.
So the blue is, is that property that's owned by them?
That is the parcel boundary. That's the parcel boundary.
Yeah, okay. And so it's not, you're not expanding or doing anything like that?
No, no.
So, just an estimate, how many feet would you guess it's going to be from that back door over to where those houses are? Yeah.
Well, I think originally in the, from the Sears, it was 860 feet. So we're gotta be, I don't know. Oh, yep.
Let's measure it. So, back door is right in the middle here?
Yeah.
All right. It's in meters to start. Let me move it to, that is the. Showing about 484 to the nearest thing.
The closest house?
Mm-hmm. In that direction. I think it's further to there. Yeah, that seems to be the closest one. Just under 500.
And you've done studies on the sound?
Well, there's not a lot of studies, but I did call around. I did try to call some people in Detroit, cause nobody really does studies like that. I tried to call some places downstate. They did the barriers for freeways, the sound, uh, for the neighborhoods from the freeways. They don't do that kind of work. I did call, I did get a referral from, uh, somebody, uh, this local that said that they worked on the Streeters. And he said, the way it's designed, the, uh, sound from the cooling units from the curling club are going to be louder than the sound leaving the building.
John?
Chris, I noticed in the staff report, the recommended action is that we table this and among other things, get more details about the sound dampening. Strikes me as a, probably a wise thing to do. It sounds like Phil doesn't really have all the information about sound. I wouldn't necessarily expect to.
Paper from the architect, but I, there's no real sound testing though. That's the.
There, there's gotta be something that.
I, yeah, I, I'm.
Can provide more assurances to us. Cause we have an obligation to the whole community, not just to you. We got obligations to everybody. So if you're going to be putting a.
A lot of the testing can't be done until it's done.
Right. So, I mean, I, I feel like I can speak to that a little bit. I've had, I've had some level of engagement in, um, not anything, design of anything like this, but other professional sound concerns. Uh, and I would say I know it can be dangerous, I guess, but, um, I mean, all due respect to Jessica, this doesn't cut it, just a letter that says, yeah, I, I think it's, you know, it's good.
Right.
Um, my experience has been auditoriums, many kind of musical venues, um, sound engineers, uh, architectural design. So, what I'm struck by is, you know, you, Phil, you seem to have a significant amount of experience, and I feel like you're trying to bring a good product to the community that is responsive to a likely need, and, you know, is a good, you have a good opportunity to fill this venue, but my, I'm seeing you as a person who runs this kind of event, event, venue, not a person who has all of the, you know, I made some calls here, I made some calls there, I would encourage you to secure the services of a professional, maybe it's this architect, maybe it's somebody else who can come here and speak to us in the, with all the understanding that we need to have and that the public needs to have, and with the experience of saying, hey, I've designed five or 50 similar facilities, and this is what we did in these situations to address the concerns of the community and address the concerns of the public, because frankly, to be quite honest, you need to add some credibility to your presentation, because there are a great deal of concerns in the public that we have to be responsive to, and the materials that you're presenting, again, I believe aren't adequately represented by a professional who gives us the opportunity to say, hey, Phil has brought the right people to the table to help him with this design, and we can be confident that this design is complete and will meet the requirements that we set forth for it.
Hmm, I understand that.
Mm-hmm. John, or Kara?
So, there were two pieces that I heard from the public on the sound, one is sound that's coming from inside the building and then exiting, but the other was activity in the parking lot, and you mentioned that the rear parking lot is really just employee parking, but there is an exit there, is there really a need for public access on the rear of the building at all?
No, I was gonna do a lockout, once you leave, at certain point, maybe when the dog park closes, you can't get back in, you can leave, or fire exit.
So, the dog park is using that exit as well?
Yeah, it's a corridor that goes through the main building, so...
Okay, I understand.
Yeah, I think there was a floor plan on one of these. Okay, yeah, here's, actually demonstrates a little more, so...
Thank you.
This is the corridor, so the two brothers, this came to Plan Commission a couple months ago, this is the outdoor part of the dog park, this corridor, and these two pieces are, this is more of the, number one is the nightclub area, number two is more the restaurant bar area.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have any, it doesn't benefit me to have any parking in the back.
But your parcel, the boundary of the parcel that Steve represented, I understand that it doesn't benefit you, but I'm...
But if I had to lean towards the front parking lot, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, so both parcels are owned by, it says Cherryland Center LLC, is one of the, like, when we have shown the full ownership map of Cherryland, it's, the way the parcels are designed are more, kind of almost like a site condominium, where like, building and some associated parking are designated as a parcel, and the lines don't make a ton of sense, other than it's, it's a, all works together as Cherryland Center. So, both of these, including this larger parcel with all the front parking, this front, and the retention base, they're all owned by the same owner.
I just, I'm not sure, I understand that you're seeking to address the concerns of people exiting the building, and maybe having a lockout will prevent some, but I'm not understanding the movement of people in and out of the facility, if I come at 8:00 PM to enjoy a concert at night, and I know that these folks are concerned about people exiting the venue at midnight, or 11:00 or 1:00 AM...
No, I understand, there's gonna be people like that, I mean, there's, I can control as much as I can control, I mean, in all reality, I would wall the door shut if that was what it was gonna take, but that door is there, I can't do anything about...
The door's not the door.
Are we...
Nope.
We can't take any comment from, thank you.
No, but I understand people could come before that lockout, stay all night, and then leave, is what you're saying, at, you know, 2:00 in the morning, or, right.
Well, the concern is how we're, when you came before, our concern, I believe, was expressed, and that we wanted to see people, that the entrance to your venue and the exit, so if I came to the venue, I'm parking on the east side, because that's where the main entrance is, that's where the main exit is, maybe you have to have an emergency, a fire, fire safety exit out the back, but it shouldn't be somebody where any of your patrons, somewhere where any of your patrons are coming and going from the facility, so that any, any noise generated by people exiting are on the east side of the building, is that what, kind of what we all thought, right? Yeah.
But I, there's, that door is going to be there, I can't, I can't just lock it.
Yeah, that's where you need to have an architectural professional come in and help you design the layout of your building, the layout of your venue, so that your front door is, is on the east side, and the way people come and go from this venue...
My front door is in the front.
Southeast.
It is in the front, it's not the back.
But you're not telling me, I'm hearing you say lockout, but can I come...
The back door, just the back door is a lockout to where people can't park along the neighborhood.
Employees only?
Just employees.
Okay.
Everybody should park in the front, the back doesn't benefit anything for me, that's basically has to be there for the dog park. And then I added a door in the center there to try to control most of the stuff to the front, that whole place is designed to lean towards the front of the building. I don't even have to go, no employees even have to go through the back to exit or enter any of my stuff, everything is contained within the front of the building. So, it's all front entrance, there is a back entrance that I'm trying to control, but I'm not gonna 100% control, there's always people are gonna be able to do certain things.
John? Not necessarily, I thought I heard you say earlier that you could have the employees park out front as well.
No, the parking, the employee parking's in the back.
I don't like that.
Well, I mean...
You're gonna have employees leaving at 2:00 in the morning, they're gonna walk out there and not say anything and keep quiet, I don't buy it. I don't think we want anybody walking out the back door, I think it's necessary as in fire, safety reasons, an emergency, but going and coming, I don't think anybody should be going out that door after hours of people are trying to sleep.
Well, that's the fine, I was just, I thought having some employee parking back there would deter people from parking back there, because if, between the dog park outside, you'll start limiting room to where people wouldn't want to park back there. The only reason why I even suggested there'd be employee parking back there to take up space, to where people, if they drove around back, they wouldn't think it'd be a good idea to try to park back there.
Well, I guess personally, I'm hoping there's a way you can figure out a way, if this flies at all, that all the goings and comings are out the front door, and you tell your public, you wanna come here, you come in the front door, you're gonna go out the front door.
Yeah.
And the fire department's gonna need that back door probably in an emergency, but I don't think it ought to get used, I don't think it's conceivable that you can use that back door with people going out there, and there's not gonna be a lot of noise that people are gonna be hearing, that when the door opens, whatever the sounds are in the building, are gonna get out for the five or 10 seconds that that door's open, somebody's gonna wake up from being asleep since 10 o'clock at night, I don't think that's right. And employees are gonna go out there, and they're gonna talk to each other, if they get off the shift, they're gonna talk about what they just did, and that's gonna make a lot of sounds that people are gonna hear when they're trying to sleep, so, it's a big site, and I think there's plenty of room for people to park and go and come out the front, I don't think there's a need to use the back for anything, and I don't think we should allow it.
Molly?
So, refresh my memory on the dog place, are they using that back entrance to enter the dog place?
That is their entrance.
That is their entrance, so, that entrance is gonna be open...
Not at night, they're not...
After, yeah, after nine.
They're not out at the hours when people are trying to sleep, the dog park isn't.
So, you would, you would have to figure out a way to set up a out-only.
I could do an out-only, I just don't know how to control past, there's only, I feel, after doing a lockout at 9:00, there's always gonna be the people that are gonna, as you said, park.
Bill, I'll come back to it again, and I understand where you're going, and I think you're trying to tell us what we want, but given the caliber and the size of the development that you're talking about, and how you're trying to fill this space, I think that part of the problem is that you're explaining your operation like an owner and an operator...
Right.
And not like a designer of a facility of this magnitude, who can present everything in the framework that we need to be able to receive it, to be comfortable with, if you were just doing a bar, it would be similar in context to what we were looking at in terms of the two brothers, but the venue, the documentation you've provided, again, I'll come back to, I feel like you need to have a design professional who has the skills to be able to articulate, translate in, from your expectation of how you're gonna operate this facility, to how it's been designed, because what we've got right now is just kind of a highlighted, sketched-on drawing, and in your explanations as an operator, we're not, we're not connecting in a way that we can all be comfortable. So, I see that the motion is to table it, Steve, did you have anything to add?
Just to kind of echo some of these things, and to kind of summarize, yeah, I think the materials, like you said, you spoke to some people on the phone, either having either someone come in or having some written communication, like, you spoke to these people, we did not, and we didn't have anything in our packet that spoke to those things, which helps us, and helps the Plan Commission in gathering the necessary information to make a decision. One other point in the report, I didn't highlight it kind of as directly, but one of the site development requirements, so, the entire application is gonna be evaluated against the requirements of the zoning ordinance, there's a planning, our planned shopping center has its standards, and then anything else in the ordinance that is relevant, so one of these for the site plan review standards is the essential facilities and services, adequate essential facilities and services, including highways, streets, police, fire protection, drainage, refuse, disposal, water, sewage, and schools shall be available, so that's kind of the standard for any site plan review, and one that we don't often touch on is police services, other things like fire, we send a Metro Fire as an agency review, and they are one of the ones that review it. We can, in some communities, do this on the regular, is have the Sheriff's Department take a look at site plan applications, I think it would be valuable to get their perspective on something like this, that is what is proposed, because only what we're trying to avoid is anything becoming an issue, and if we can design our way out of it, yeah, there still could be people back there, and that would be an issue that'd have to be dealt with, there's a noise ordinance of the township, but the, we're trying to design it so that these issues don't come up on the regular, so, having the Sheriff's Department perspective, someone probably has experience with when Streeters was around, and I know that's different location, it's across the road, it doesn't directly, or as closely about the residential, but it's still in the area, it could be useful to draw on that experience, or if they saw this, they could say, oh yes, there's going to be X, Y, and Z issues, or if we manage X, Y, and Z, this could be something that could be managed, I don't know what they would say, but they would be a good perspective to get.
Mm-hmm, I think we're all in agreement with that, right?
Yep.
So, can we be clear for Mr. Phillips here about what he needs to bring?
Professionalism. I understand what I need, I need to, yeah.
You understand, okay.
Yeah, like, some of those conversations you had, some of those as written would help us understand some of the, like, technical aspects of the sound, when I, when we're looking, talking about like, details of the materials, basically, how is it, how is it going to work, and anything that's operation, you've heard the concerns that they had about the operation, we're trying to minimize likelihood of things happening.
Oh, me too.
Yeah, absolutely.
I want to be clear, I guess I don't want you to walk away thinking that I believe you're unprofessional.
No, I don't think that, it's just more of a credible in that line of work, you want, yeah.
Right, right, okay.
All right.
Any other comments that the commission has?
We better make a motion.
Yes, we should, would you like to make that for us, John?
All right, I'll make the motion, that application SPR 2025-06 submitted by Philip Beeler for a bar, restaurant, and nightclub on parcel 05014049008, located at 1776 South Garfield Avenue, be tabled to allow for the applicant to address the following issues, one and two that are mentioned in this report, as well as the things that we discussed this evening.
Support.
We have a motion by Racine, support by Robinson, any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All, any opposed, same? The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is PD 2025-41, Oak Hollow Planned Unit Development, Major Amendment Introduction.
Pause as people start moving around a little bit.
Sounds good, just take a minute.
I got a way in PDFs to do tabs, like, item 7B starts here, and item 7...
How did we judge the sound on the car wash?
It's a good question, we can...
We had issues with the car wash...
Yeah.
Some sound people did decimal readings or something.
Having it be in a residential area, so, how did we determine that the decibels would be correct to have there? Do you remember how, was it a sound expert who did that?
Yeah, I think John was starting to say...
I don't remember exactly who, but I think there are professionals, as Chris was alluding to, if they spend a couple of bucks, they can find somebody with credentials that knows sound, and then, I totally agree with what you were suggesting to Chris, that's what they need to do, they need to get somebody, we can't just vote up or down based on, Joe Blow wrote on the back of a napkin that this isn't gonna be too loud, you can't take that to the bank, we need something that's much more...
I remember there was a lot of detailed information on sound by an engineer on the car wash, the decibel levels coming out of car washes from around the state and different locations, there was a lot of documentation on that.
Better be somebody who does that.
And that was documentation, as I recall, associated with the design, where they said, this is the likely sound you're gonna get if it's designed this way.
Doors are gonna be open at this time, it's gonna come down, and, yeah.
I think that was an important thing, was that the doors needed to be closed for there to be, to minimize sound.
Yeah.
While the car wash is working, so, this is a good question, Molly, yeah. We ready to move on?
All right.
So, that would be the Oak Hollow Planned Unit Development, Major Amendment.
All right, it says Oak Hollow, the PUD is actually Lake Point PUD, Oak Hollow's the street that is relevant, and we're talking about this parcel at the moment, it's a proposed amendment to the Lake Point PUD, this entire PUD includes the Value City, it includes a lot of the apartments going further up Park Drive and the lake, this piece was originally in the original PUD from 1987, we dug out the file for it early today.
Eighty-seven?
Yes, yes, yep, yep, PUD-1987-02, yeah, yeah, we got the file of it earlier today. Originally proposed as office and commercial, I think this was specifically office, has not been built on, and is proposed for multifamily residential, which happens to be the underlying district in this PUD, and it's adjacent to some of the other apartments. There are a couple, staff did a completeness review, the completeness checklist is included in the packet, and then, just in the body of the report, highlighted some things that have been updated since then on resubmitted plans, just kind of adding some details on lighting, dumpster enclosure, bike parking, I wanted to highlight, though, a couple other items, so there is an exhibit later on in the plan set, so a large plan set, it might maybe...
What are you looking for?
It is a exhibit that shows, it's at the end of these, here it is. An exhibit that showed the outline of the originally proposed...
What's the number?
It is Exhibit 4C, it is sort of the end of this, close to the end of this section.
Yep. Last page.
But it looks like this, this is the superimposed, the original proposed, originally approved PUD from 1987 onto what is proposed now in this section, it shows where the office is and the parking was going to be. The proposed apartments as compared to what was originally proposed, a little bit larger building footprint, but also includes underground parking, so the open parking lot is a bit smaller than what was originally proposed, a little bit different design, and some other amendments also changed what ended up getting built on the rest of that PUD, as you can see, that is not how some of those things ended up turning out, but. The other piece to highlight on here is the non-motorized, kind of rendering that has some of the details on it, which might be further up, here we go. So this is part of the Boardman Lake Loop is on this parcel, and the bridge that connects to Medali Park is pretty much right across, Medali Park's directly across this part of the river. There's a proposed trail connection to Oak Hollow Drive to be able to get down in between the two. So staff noted that the Boardman Lake Loop Trail is 10 feet wide with a 20-foot easement, and just to match that on whatever's proposed, Ingress and Egress is Oak Hollow Drive, which connects to Park Drive, and then, the only other comment we made was on the things related to the environment, so there's the, Eagle has a wetlands map viewer, which shows the lake and the river, but that wetlands didn't really extend further up this site. The letter from the Watershed Center that you received as correspondence does also highlight, there's the supplemental shore regulations, which is a 35-foot vegetative buffer. There is already the easement for the trail, which is in that buffer, but that is already established and understood, and I believe even our requirements do allow for things like that. They commented on this, I believe there was another section of this, of the site plan drawings that showed the setback from the water to the building, and I think the narrowest point was about 45 or 50, and we can more highlight that specifically, if you want to highlight that there is the vegetative buffer, and we can double-check that based on what the Watershed Center said, but I think how it was proposed still met, subject to some double-checking. But that's mostly what we had, in terms of what we noted on the initial staff review of this as an introduction, applicants are here as well to answer any questions, and otherwise, the only motion would be to accept and set a public hearing.
Any thoughts or questions, concerns from the planning commission? Tom?
I think Seth has given us enough stuff, it sounds like the application materials are basically here, we can send it for a public hearing. I noticed in the packet, or on our desk today, the letter from the baykeeper was dated today. Doug, if you had a chance, have you seen this yet?
Yeah, we just received it today, we'll forward it to the applicant.
Well, sometimes we don't either.
I know you.
Yeah.
I guess I would just suggest, maybe ASAP staff, if you could get this letter to Doug.
Yep, we'll forward to them.
It's something that you can address, so that when the public hearing happens, you can tell us whatever you want to tell us about that.
Mm-hmm.
Other than that, I think it makes sense to send it for public hearing.
Anyone else with any comments or concerns?
This is a total of 24 units, then, 10 in one, and 10 in 14 in another.
So Steve, remind me, and I don't know, I do this all the time, and then I still get confused about the process.
Mm-hmm.
So we would be approving, this is an application to amend the PUD.
Mm-hmm.
And change the use from office to residential.
Correct.
And then, in addition to that, and then just asking because of the great level of detail that Doug's provided, this looks to also, are we simultaneously approving a site plan?
If we, yeah, it would kind of go together, yeah, some communities do it a little differently, where there's like different motions for the site plan or different approvals, but it's sort of combined into one process.
That's good.
Yeah.
So we're looking at both things, and that would be, so eventually, we would be leading towards an amendment of the PUD and an approval of this site plan to bring the amendment into reality.
Correct.
Okay.
Is there a typo? There are really 228 parking spots for 28, or what is it, 24 dwellings, so that's almost 10.
Is that the entire PUD, though?
I don't know, I was wondering, almost 10 cars per unit.
Yeah, it could be the entire PUD, maybe.
Or that could be a typo.
I don't think there's, how many parking lots you have?
My report, yeah.
228.
I don't have.
You're not building that many?
Oh. Better start designing some parking, Doug. Oh.
Put in a parking deck.
Some, sometimes we use other reports as templates, it looks like Gauthier has 228 parking spots.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
We will note that and correct that for the next one.
Just to direct everybody's attention to this, I don't know what this is called, but page 22 of it is where they show their proposed number of parking spaces, 17 outdoor spaces and 57 total spaces, which would include the underground parking, so.
All right.
Anyway, that's where the parking information is contained, so, good catch, I think the report is overzealous in the parking spaces.
Yep. Note to self, if I use a different report as a template for a new report.
I've never done anything like that before.
I would also add, I think it's really important, I want to reinforce what you said, John, about communication with the Watershed Center, and recognizing that there is a trail, and I am, I think we need to come back with a strong case for how the buffer concerns are being addressed, given that it seems like there was already some PUD commitments to, that don't conform with the typical buffer that we're requiring now. I'd like to also see that balanced with the trail, I really appreciate that the developer's chosen to show a trail connection all the way back to Oak Hollow Drive. I'm partial to TARD, I served on the board, and I would very much, what's it?
We did have a conversation with TARD.
Oh, you did? Okay, great, because I'd like to make sure that, yeah, please, go ahead, Doug.
Doug Mansfield, on behalf of the developer, we did meet with TARD, it was part of the Garfield Town, actually, it was part of the easement language, that whenever someone connects to the TARD, or the TARD Trail, they have to get their approval, which is kind of funny, because they give them the easement, but you still got to come back and talk to them. Two things, they would like to, that came out of that discussion, they would like to have an easement, additional easement, you'll see this, because we just found this out, that would turn into the land faster than it does right now, to get off the shoreline on the north side, that's the sensitive part of the ground, where the boardwalk is, that boardwalk's big maintenance, and it's about time to be maintenance, so they want to be the ability to turn into the upland more and faster, which we are okay with, and that's after our northernmost point in the building, so it's not really encumbering us, and then they want, evidently, there was no approval to pave the trail, which when a trail gets as much traffic as this one does in a wooded area, it just beats down on the roots, it's the worst thing you can do, so we're going to give them that also.
Oh, great.
Yeah, so we, and you should have a letter from them, so.
Okay, and they also commented that the six-foot width for the connector seemed maybe narrow to me?
So the six-foot doesn't meet your standards, I will say that, anything that's not flat is very steep on this site, okay? And we contain that to that. When I met with staff here, they were looking for not necessarily the major trail, but a link, I'll compare the TARD Trail as being South Airport Road, this offshoot is like, it's at 10%, and that's the best we could do, okay? So it doesn't, will not meet ADA, and they understood that, but they appreciated the connector. The thing is, when we're building across the slope right now, we're able right now to contain the grading and clearing to about six to eight feet outside the six-foot trail, so for a total clearing of around 20 feet, and we can, you know, when we get out there in the field, we did a, before we meet them, just so you know, we did a tree survey, they had entire area of that lot to be developed, okay, so we do an inventory. We can go out here and this, and sneak it through the trees as much as possible, but a 10-foot trail going across an existing one-on-three slope, we're going to have, that four feet's exponentially going to impact that slope.
I understand.
And I'll give you the easement, I'll give you the easement wider, but I would be conscious, and I'm a trail guy, too, you know, is it worth it for the traffic being generated? So that's all I'll say.
Okay, thank you. It sounds like there's...
And we'll give you the 10-foot wide trail, but there's got to be understanding that that's going to have a bigger impact on that hill.
We'd be looking at retaining walls and other...
Yeah, a lot of clearing, a lot more clearing, and it's a wonderful site, I had no idea it was out there, I don't think anybody did, you know.
I was actually just walking by it last week, knowing that we would be looking at it, yeah, it's a nice little location.
So, if there's anything else, let me know.
Okay. That's, those are the thoughts I had, I agree with John, I think we're ready to go to a public hearing.
I'll make the motion then, that the application PUD 1987-02-M submitted by SPPEC Holdings LLC for a major amendment to the Lake Point Planned Unit Development to construct two buildings with 24 multifamily dwelling units at parcel 05-212-002-00 be accepted and scheduled for a public hearing, hearing for the June 11th, 2025 Rugger Meeting of the Planning Commission, subject to the, subject to the applicant addressing the following items, 1 through 3 of PD report 2025-41.
Support. All right, we have a motion by Robinson, support by Racine, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same? Motion passes. Thank you very much. All right, next on the agenda, we have PD 2025-42, Pine Grove Homes Special Use Permit Extension Request.
So this application was, or is, was originally reviewed in 2023 by the planning commission, this is for Pine Grove Homes, they currently exist further north on US 31 across from Meyer. The proposal was to use this site at 4030 Corner Meadow Lane Drive and US 31 as a mobile home sales site. The zoning ordinance describes this specific use as sale of prefabricated structures, it's actually defined separately, even in previous iterations of the ordinance, it was identified separately, and was permitted via special use, which they originally went through the process in 2023, it was granted approval on May 10th of 2023. For approval dates, staff have typically gone by the date that the RDO was recorded, since it is a recorded document, but there's provision in the ordinance that the approval shall be for two years, or the actual language talks about the expiration, if substantial construction, or if the special use permit involves no construction, the permitted use is not commenced and proceeded meaningfully toward completion within two years from the date that the special use permit order was executed, that's why we use that language, because that's described in there, the special use permit shall expire automatically, prior to expiring, the applicant may submit a written request for an extension of the special use permit, which is what is before you. The extension would be for one year, and there are four criteria, so our report just goes through those criteria, one being the applicant is able to demonstrate that construction or establishment of the use has been delayed by factors that are beyond their control, and that construction or use will commence and continue meaningfully toward completion within the one-year extension. So that applicant's letter indicates that, at the time, they were looking at, there was an interested party looking at purchasing their other parcel for redevelopment, but that fell through at the time, and so they did not move their site, they've been approached by another party, according to their letter, and the extension would allow for them an opportunity to explore that. Otherwise, the factors are, there have been no significant changes in the character of the surrounding area. There have been several developments that have been either completed or reviewed since then, however, these haven't significantly altered the character, they're all contributing to, this is a commercial corridor, commercial and some industrial, mostly behind on the other side of 31, but otherwise, the developments that have occurred have been generally in line with the same character of the area, and nothing that staff identified as in conflict. Those developments would be Bish's RV directly to the south was approved, the conditions, they ultimately decided not to move forward with their improvements. U-Haul was reviewed administratively, and their construction was completed after, planning commission looked at Pine Grove, Airstream across the road was administratively reviewed and completed in 2024, and staff just recently reviewed reuse of a building at 721 West Blue Star Drive across the road as well, so, a lot of things happening in the vicinity, but nothing that specifically would conflict, and then the other factor is there have been no changes to the master plan or this ordinance that would conflict with the approved special use permit. We did adopt the new master plan, since this was approved, however, the future land use stayed the same, it was commercial previously, it's commercial this time around as well, and CG is still compatible with that. So with that, the applicant is here as well, if you have any questions, but otherwise, that is the request.
What is the planning commission's pleasure?
Sure, you want a motion? Has anybody else got a discussion? I'll make the motion that application SUP-2023-01 submitted by Rick Newman for a special use permit for the sale of prefabricated structures at parcel 0503200120 be granted, a one-year extension until June 1st, 2026, to establish the use on the site.
Support.
Motion by Augustinelli, support by Klein, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same? Motion passes.
Thank you.
And with that, we moved on to PD 2025-37, Proposed Zoning Ordinance Amendments on Substantial Construction Defining, excuse me, substantial construction definition and lighting introduction.
So this was what we've been studying at the past few study sessions. So this was what we've been studying at the past few study sessions, adding the definition for substantial construction, and then making some changes to the lighting section, staff incorporated, planning commissions, comments and suggestions. There's a lot of good suggestions for improving that proposed language. That's been incorporated into the draft. So there is proposed definition. This is just an excerpt of where it would insert itself into the ordinance. I tried to do proposed added language in yellow, and anything removed as gray and struck through.
Seems to me to be consistent with our expectations. Does everyone agree?
Yeah.
Yep. Anything look, everything looked straightforward is what we were expecting. Also, the new things that are added are some of these drawings, which were hard to highlight in yellow, but those are new as well.
Okay.
Yeah, otherwise, that is the supposed ordinance amendment.
Seems pretty straightforward to me. Any questions or concerns from the planning commission?
I'll make the motion. Motion that the draft proposed zoning ordinance text amendment as attached to Planning Department Report 2025-37 be scheduled for a public hearing for the June 11, 2025 Planning Commission Regular Meeting.
Support.
Motion by Klein, support by Robinson. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same? Motion passes. All right. We're doing pretty good. And we have another public comment period. Would anybody like to step up and make any additional public comments? All right, public comment is closed. Any other business for tonight? Molly?
If you haven't had an opportunity to leave from the airport, like at midnight, and come home and drive down Airport Road, there seems to be a lot of use of the bands of color around buildings, like what we... I mean, it is like you're going into Las Vegas down there. So I don't know whether we need to have Mike take a check on some of that, but they're outlining the buildings.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the same way as the coffee shop over here.
Say, you don't frequent the...
Oh, yeah. And it's bright.
You don't frequent the red light district on South Airport, but it sounds like it's getting pretty raucous.
Well, it's, it's all commercial stuff.
Yeah.
But, you know, I don't know how much business they do after 7 o'clock, 6 or 7 o'clock, and it's big.
Right at South Airport going up the hill, leaving.
No, it's coming out of the airport and headed toward Garfield Road.
Steve, is it kind of thing where staff might take a look and see if there's any potential zoning violations with new lighting?
We could forward to Mike and see what...
They'll have to go at night.
Yeah, someone has to go at night, yeah.
It's between town line and Garfield?
It's between town line and Garfield, yeah, on the south side of the road.
Mm-hmm.
All of that, all of that, almost every one of the buildings has got an outline of some blue or red or color on it.
Yeah. The blue is the especially bright. I remember in the winter, when it's still dark in the morning, we had someone coming into the office and could see one of the blue lights from Garfield of something on South Airport, like a quarter mile before you even reached the intersection, like something was shooting straight up into the sky.
Yeah. I don't know how we rectify that or how...
Right.
Might need to have something special with this new technology that's coming in. It just seems to be the craze, so.
Right. We're attempting to address it updating the ordinance, but yeah, some of these might already be on some buildings here. But there's still the sort of general requirements of the ordinance now. If there's anything that our zoning administrator or code enforcement could take a look at, absolutely would want to do so. So thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Sorry I was there at that time of the night.
It's all right, yeah.
Items for the next agenda, and I will start off by saying, reminding everyone, I think I've said before, I'm not going to be here for the next meeting. So John, you mind filling in?
Right, I'll handle it.
Thank you, sir. It looks like we've got training for the capital improvements program. Is that just a report, or are we having actual training of the planning commission?
We're trying to figure out exactly how to do it. So a couple weeks ago, some staff, including myself, planning director, and the treasurer, possibly among others, there was a webinar from MSU Extension on capital improvement programs and just the process of what goes into, planning for capital projects. There was a lot of good kind of summary in there. It also like could be something, if we can toolkit it and use it, we already, we watched a video in the last study session, and it seemed to work well. If we can toolkit that, that might be something we use. We might do like a section of it because it was a webinar that they were trying to make interactive, so we obviously can't. Interactive, and part of it was also geared toward treasures when they started getting into like how to amortize it over multiple years. I'm like, all right, this is going over my head. All right, the planning part was, yeah, that's what we care about.
So it sounds like you're going to try and take some information from some longer presentations to other individuals on staff and on the...
Yes.
Committee and distill it down into maybe 15 or 20 minutes that might be useful to this group's...
Yes.
...contribution to the CIP, which...
Yes.
Barely limit... The Parks Commission's probably going to have a greater contribution, right?
Yeah, so there's, it's going to be a few. And there's, as we've alluded to, the township has formed now a CIP committee as well. It's the supervisor, trustee representative to parks, trustee representative to building committee, planner, engineer, and manager. The township manager, of course. And it is in the Michigan Planning Enabling Act that a CIP does go to the planning commission, because it is part of, does it align with like the overall planning goals, the master plan? We align the master plan also with the township strategic plan. So a lot of it would be reviewing it kind of from that higher level. Parks is giving some specific feedback or will be giving feedback on like any specific projects of, that are related to parks. Because a lot of capital projects, like the township owns parks, and we own facilities, and we own water and sewer infrastructure. Those are going to be the major categories, unlike, unlike say, the city that also owns roads, also owns a marina. Like, they have a lot more categories than we will have, but we will have some that will align with the master plan.
So it sounds like our role as a planning commission in being educated is to understand how we would review the CIP sometime later in the year against the master plan.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
So there'll be some training on that. And then we discussed at the last, we might do more of a like high level at this point. But at the last meeting, we talked about one of the main kind of next projects would be to do like a corridor plan for South Airport. Even if we start like outlining it, would be a first step to what might this entail. We were planning on having a stakeholder meeting of some folks around Logan's Landing. We ended up moving that. Playing director's been covering, so we're going to move that meeting to a little bit later, so. But we can still do at least some initial, like, what is the scope of this and what are we hoping to accomplish?
Okay, sounds good. John?
Any, any movement on the signs issue? I know we were waiting for a report from council, and now we got to tackle that, but that's probably a study session topic for as soon as possible.
Yeah, as soon as we have something, we can update. I'll see if we have heard anything from council. I know they have been working on a few other items for the township. I can see where they were at on the signs. I know it's been out there, and I know they've been made aware of it, but I can double-check on the signs.
All right, well, there's not anything else?
Motion will adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Thanks, everyone.